...on Public War 975. He advised in a notice that this meeting was made by closing a board in Town Hall and mailing to officially doesn't read newspapers, listed the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place at the Town Hall at 7:00 PM on Monday, January 7th, 2019. I think we have three people who are taking roles tonight, but I'll take it.
They will be taking it. So it will be Jessica Glad, Jody Sharma, and Wolfgang Tutsoros. If you'll all raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jody Sharma.
Aye, Jessica Glad.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the government established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Impartially and justly
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of
Perform all the duties of the office of
You're going to say zoning board member and you will say zoning board member alternate number one.
Zoning board member.
Board member alternate one.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary McNabb?
Here.
Craig Clutner?
Here.
Jody Sharma?
Here.
Joyce Siegel?
Here.
Steve Tobler?
Here.
Jessica Glad?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
And at this time, I'm going to ask for a nomination for chairman of the board for 2019.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate Joe Steinberg for chairman, but before we open the nominations for second, I would like to say a couple of things. We're very lucky on this board to have Joe with a long service in the legal field in municipal land use law, and we don't realize how much he does offline. He and Eileen work together, and Gil makes sure every application is perfect before it comes before this board, and he's always congratulating us about the resolution committee, but he's on that resolution committee too, and he does those edits. So I just wanted to make that clear, that offline, he does a lot more work for this board than is visible.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Tobler?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Wolfgang Tutsoros?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Steinberg. Good job.
Mr. Gallinari?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Wolfgang Tutsoros?
Yes.
All right, next we have the appointment of the Board of Adjustment Attorney. I think we're stuck again this evening. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Cal Fraser as the board attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
I can second, right? I'll second too.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Tobler?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. And finally, you're quite welcome. And finally, we need a nomination for the appointment of the Board of Adjustment Secretary.
Anybody?
Anybody?
Please.
Is there a nomination of Eileen?
I nominate Eileen Duff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Tobler?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. All right, I have some comments to make tonight, but I'm going to wait until after we have our, the one hearing that we have listed. We are joined to get, next turn to the approval of one set of minutes, the minutes of December the 17th, 2018. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the meeting of December 17th?
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Woman favorite?
Hi.
I oppose. The minutes are approved. Minutes of the meeting of December the 17th, 2018. We have three memorializations on the agenda. The first one is Solace Development. That was 68 Southern Slope Drive. I gave two, one comment tonight to J. Owen. She's going to put on the record any changes that were made to the minutes that were distributed to the board members.
Earlier today, I distributed another revised version, which in the motion on the first page, the first paragraph of the preamble, and on paragraph number two, added the term "an addition," so it will be the construction of an addition and a detached one-car garage in all three places. And then this evening, Mr. Steinberg, in paragraph 10 on page six, I will be eliminating two sentences that precede the last sentence on that page. So it will go from, "The board is also satisfied that the massing of the home is out of keeping with the other homes in the neighborhood, which is characterized by homes with three to four bedrooms. The board finds and concludes that this deviation from the allowable floor area ratio is too great, even given the oversized lot area of the property." The two sentences in between those two have been eliminated, and I believe that's it.
Okay.
And this is a denial, so the only people eligible to vote are those that voted to deny the application.
And Eileen, who were those who voted to deny?
I would say Mary McNabb, Craig, Jody, Steve, Jessica, Jeff.
Were one of those individuals like to move the adoption of the memorializing resolution?
I'll move the adoption of calendar 3655-18.
Second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Tobler?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Next, we have the memorializing resolution in calendar 3657-18, Harry and Thalia Gross at 121 Island Avenue. Who's eligible to vote on this?
Everyone, the other four members.
Is there a motion to, are there any additions or corrections to the memorializing of that calendar number? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt calendar 3657-18.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Tobler?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. And the last memorializing resolution is calendar 3661-18, Matt Kelly at the Short Hills location, Matt Kelly, Short Hills, at 150 JFK Parkway. Who's eligible here?
All members.
All members.
All members of the board. Is there a motion to, are there any additions or corrections to the memorializing resolution as distributed? If not, is there a motion to adopt that memorializing resolution?
Move calendar 3661-18 for approval.
Second?
Second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Tobler?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Yes. All right, the scheduling gods must have known that there was a very important football game on tonight, because instead of the usual four, five, six applications, tonight we have one, which is Sarah and Jason Singer. I'm going to eliminate tonight my speech welcoming everybody here. You are welcome tonight.
Pardon me? If they want to read it, it's on the screen.
Yes, there's a, there's a, you don't need that stuff. Okay. You've prepped a motion. So this is 177 Island Avenue, and the board members have all received in your packet the documents. Now, I understand that there are a couple of people who are going to recuse here tonight.
Yes, I need to recuse.
I need to recuse too.
All right, in light of the fact that two of our board members are going to leave, I, I'm going to make my comments now before they leave, and then we'll get to the resolution. Then we can go home and watch the ballgame.
Get to the hearing before the resolution.
Before, I'm sorry, the hearing, not the resolution. Thank you. I want to say first that it's a matter of great pride to me that I am once again elected chair of this board. I have to say that of all the years that I've been on the board, this is one of the strongest boards that I have had the pleasure to be associated with. Very intelligent people, thoughtful, and I'm very happy to know that this board, given its present membership, is in charge of a very important aspect of municipal government. I thank you for your faith in me, and I will trust that we will have another really terrific year. Want to just mention two things, more as a reminder than anything else. The first is the question of conflicts and recusals. That's a very, very tricky area of the law, and even I, who had some significant professional experience in this field, was a little taken aback when Roger Klapp, who was formerly the township attorney in Milburn Township, as Mary well knows, the rest of you, I think, are too young to have known Roger Klapp, informed me when I was appointed to this board that no one in my law firm could represent anyone in any capacity in this town having to do with the municipal government. So for example, if a client of our firm got a speeding ticket, nobody in the law firm could represent that individual before the municipal court. Came as a big surprise to me, but I went and checked it out, and as usual, Roger was right on the money. So this whole area of conflicts, if there's any doubt in your mind whatsoever as to whether you should sit on a case because of any affiliation you might have with a property within 200 feet, like for example, a synagogue or a church, please reach out prior to the meeting to our attorney, give her all the facts, and she will advise you as to whether or not in her opinion you should recuse from the case. The other thing I want to remind everybody of, and I just have to do this every year, when you visit the properties, and obviously, all of us should visit every property before the meeting, and I know that there are at least two or three members of the board who religiously do this, because I have met them on many occasions when I have visited properties myself, when you visit the property, please either reach out in advance to the homeowner directly or to the homeowner through one of the listed experts for the homeowners, the applicant, and advise them that you are going to be at the property, walking around. We don't want anybody to look out the window, see a strange person, call the police. And inevitably, in my experience on this board, in half of the cases, when the homeowner either sees me at the property or speaks to me in advance, and my preference personally is to call in advance to let people know that I'm going to be at the property, almost inevitably, homeowners will volunteer to talk to you about the case, and they will say to you, if there's any information that you need, feel free to ask, is there anything that we can tell you? Any conversations with applicants outside the hearing itself strictly prohibited. We had a very serious case, Mary remembers it, here in town, where a person on this board, and it wasn't that many years ago, was visiting a property. A homeowner came out and said, what do you think? My chances are, this person said, if you do volunteer X, Y, and Z, in that case, I think it was the planting of some bushes or trees, you'll have no problem. The board unanimously rejected the application. The applicant was furious, justifiably so, went to the township committee and raised a tremendous ruckus about the fact that they had been trapped. And it is very dangerous and legally impermissible for anyone on this board to have any conversation with any applicant about the case prior to the hearing. One final sad note. Within the last two weeks, a former chairman of this board, who was the chairman immediately preceding my chairmanship, passed away, Roger Manchell. We, I don't know whether all of you are aware of that, but Roger served on this board as member and as chair, and then as member, subsequently served on the planning board at the time of his demise, and served on the Historic Preservation Commission, maybe other commissions as well for boards. And he did a tremendous amount of good in this town. He will be missed, and I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention tonight. Now, the two members who are going to recuse are eligible to now leave and go home. God bless and Happy New Year to both of you.
You too.
You are going to participate in the hearing tonight, and I will now address myself to the applicant, the applicants. We have an unusual situation here tonight. We have only one alternate that has been appointed, who has been appointed to this board. Two members have had to recuse tonight. That leaves, if my count is correct, one, two, three, four, five, six people. That's a little hard on you because you need a majority. That means you need four votes out of six instead of four out of seven. I'm sure you can do the math in your head. It's tougher to get four out of six than four out of seven. But having said that, there's nothing we can do about it, because the township committee has seen fit to appoint only one alternate, who will serve tonight as a, excuse me, as a member of this board. Okay, so now it's up to you folks to present your case.
We're going to swear you in first.
You swore, maybe it's not your fault you're not true. Yes, I did. Sarah Singer.
Jason Singer. Richard Keller.
Now, I'm going to just remind everyone who's going to testify those, or first of all, if you have one of these, everybody, let's turn it off now, or put it on mute or both, and if you get a message that you absolutely have to respond to either by text or by voice, please leave the room. There are three doors here. You can go in the back of the third floor and do your business back there. And board members, if anyone does have to leave, we will hold the hearing open until you come back into the room, so you'll still be eligible to hear the case and to vote. Okay, proceed. I'm sorry, I was in the middle of a thought and I interrupted myself. Those microphones are primarily recording microphones, so keep your voice up so we can hear you.
No, thank you very much, and Happy New Year. We appreciate your time today. I'm Sarah Singer. I'm here with my husband. Together, we reside with our three children at 177 Highland Avenue in Short Hills. We've been living in Short Hills for many years, and approximately four years ago, we purchased our current house. We purchased it with a vision to restore it to its 1924 time period with two goals. The first is to bring flow and functionality back into the house for modern-day standards as opposed to back in 1924, while doing this, enforcing that the work that has to be done must be aligned with the time period of the house. That was very important to us. Saying that, we spent a considerable amount of time with the Historic Preservation Committee, and they were very, very helpful with their suggestions, and we came to agree approval plans, which we've started working on. We're here today to gain your approval for a garage, and for this, we've retained Rich Keller, Casey M. Keller, who will go into more details about our application. We thank you in advance for all of your help, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Is there anyone on the board who has any questions for this witness? I have one. When I visited the house, I saw that there is an existing garage. Is that correct?
There is, yes.
Is the proposal that you have tonight to leave, to use that garage, existing garage, as a garage?
Yes.
And the doors will remain where they are?
Yes, the only change to the doors which Historic also agreed on is they are going to, right now, we have like a double entrance to them. They're just going to be moved up a bit to the edge of the garage, because it's very hard to get a car into openings. But the doors are staying the doors, and the size is staying the size.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? I'm going to eliminate tonight any reference to the audience. Let the record show, there is no audience tonight. Everyone's home watching the ballgame.
I have a quick question. In the existing two-car garage, can you get two cars in?
It depends what kind of car. My current car is too big to fit in that garage. It's a, it's a little bigger, but it's really, really hard to get two with the mirrors open and any space. I'm sure it can be done with two people, but it's very difficult. With a smaller four-door sedan, yes, you can get a car through.
But can you ever get two cars?
Yes, but too small.
Too small cars.
And you can get in and out of two smaller cars inside the garage. If you're extremely careful about opening the door, yes, it's possible, because the way the, of the, no, I don't mind if you're saying you can't do it.
No, I, I beg you. I was just saying, the doors are eight feet in width, so as my wife Sarah mentioned, it's very difficult with a larger SUV, which has three kids, to effectively bring that into the garage. That's the first part. The second part, if we have two cars in there, having bicycles and other things, you can't really open up the doors on one side. Well, if you're in the right bay, you can't open the right side door. If you're in the left bay, it's very difficult to open the left and bay, so then you have to park in the middle. If you park in the middle, it's very difficult then to have any bicycles or any other type of stuff that allows the garage.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Next witness.
Good evening. I'll be appearing tonight largely as a planner, although I am a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, and so my testimony and questions come up in the garden.
And let's put some qualifying, qualifying material on record.
I am a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, licensed as an engineer in 1989 and as a planner in 1990. I have a bachelor of science in civil engineering with concentration in water resources and environmental engineering, and that is from Rutgers University. I also hold a master's of architecture from the New Jersey Institute of Technology with a concentration in urban planning and design. It's an institution that I also taught in graduate degree for approximately 11 years, graduate degree in architecture. My licenses are in effect. I've appeared for approximately 110 boards throughout the state of New Jersey. Just this past week, at the reorganization meeting, I was now the planning board and board just engineer for the township of Long Hill, which is still in Blackmire, is going on the town center. And I've appeared to control both this board and the planning board for the last 25 years.
Your qualifications as both an engineer and as a planner are accepted by this board.
Thank you. I'll have to figure out how we're going to handle with the cameraman, so I don't block the, off the exhibit. I do have the exhibit, which is exactly what was given to the boards, I don't think we need to mark it, and if we need to, I can go into the architectural drawings as well to happen this evening. The property is a 59,078 square foot lot located within the R3 residential district. It is also a designated site within the Short Hills historic district. It is located at the intersection of Stewart Road and Highland Avenue. It's a prominent corner property. It's one of the few that recognizes its nature as a corner lot, and what's unique about it is the house is basically turned catty-cornered roughly 45 degrees, so it does face back into the intersection, which does actually create, while we are relatively, or significantly oversized lot, the orientation of the home does present some practical difficulties when trying to add additional garage space without the variance variance relief, given our current ordinance. The, I would point out, as the applicants indicated, if you've been out to the site, there are two legally conforming additions under construction, as well as some interior renovations undergoing. They were building permits because they were fully conforming. They were part of an overall project, was to, in addition to the undersized two-car garage, was to add essentially another one-car garage. That one-car garage had an attached, what they called breezeway originally, that morphed into something with doors through the HPC, and while technically it doesn't fit a car, it could fit a motorcycle, so as far as the application, we noticed this is a two-car garage addition, but really, the intent is that it's one car with an additional area with a door on it that can house bicycles and other recreational equipment. But since we didn't want to quibble about whether a vehicle could fit in, because a very small vehicle could, or a motorcycle could fit in, we've listed in the application on the draw that's a two-car addition. I would point out, in the R3 zone, a maximum of four garage spaces is permitted, so whether we have two or, yeah, two or one, we are fully conforming with the ordinance in terms of the number of spaces. And certainly not unusual in the R3, most homes do have three and four-car garages. With respect to the addition, there really was, as you can see from the application, we've got a primary home. The two-car garage is off a rectangle, or a square motor court surrounded by a historic wall. The logical place for the architect to place another two-car garage was to place it on the opposite side, creating wings around the courtyard, a frame of courtyard, allowing access into the, to the garage, limited access to that smaller bay. The addition, the problem was, by facing this back towards the other garage, technically, it also faces towards Highland Avenue. And accordingly, variance relief from section 606.2E3D is required. That section of the ordinance states that garage, garage is facing and opening onto public streets shall be prohibited in the R3 and R4 residential districts. So it's a technicality, because as it faces Highland Avenue, the existing two-car garage really blocks the visibility when you're looking at it, and there's a significant amount of trees that are actually in the area, so that when you're looking, it's very difficult. I tried to get some photographs when I was out there. I looked for some Google street views. You really couldn't get anything that got good visibility of the house from Highland Avenue, and certainly, if you're on Stewart Road, the garage would be facing away from Stewart Road. Paradoxically, if I had flipped, if we flipped the garages around so that they faced so that they faced the home immediately to the west on Stewart Road, because the garage faces the side property line before it has visibility to Stewart Road, that would actually be a conforming application. So paradoxically, if we faced it towards the neighbor with better visibility to Stewart Road, and added significantly more pavement, it'd be a conforming application. So we think this is clearly a better planning. If we faced it into the courtyard, creating that dialogue between the two garage additions flanking the historic home. The, as indicated, the, both the changes to the house under construction, as well as the addition of the one- or two-car garage was approved by the HPC, and that resolution is attached as part of the application. We feel that this board can approve this under both C1 and C2 of Municipal Land Use Law, 4055 D70C1 and C2. C1, where we think a hardship is created by the location and position of the lawfully existing dwellings that sits on the site. Because it is catty-corner, the logical place to put it technically faces the street, even though it's fully blocked by the remainder part of the house. The, with regard to C2, the flexible C2, we think that this represents a better planning alternative. And the purposes of the land use law that are advanced would be 4055 D2, section I, which is an aesthetic improvement over any alternative. The, the negative criteria required for all variances is a two-pronged. Again, there's no substantial detriment to public good and no substantial impairment to the intended purpose of the master plan. Both of those accounts, we think there is no negative impact and no detriment to the intended purpose of the master plan. This was approved by the HPC, which is the agency that is tasked with protecting the integrity of the historic neighborhood. The existing house and wall block visibility from the street. I would also point out, the roots of our ordinance that prohibit garages from facing the street really comes out of the original idea from Stuart Hartshorn, when he developed this part of Short Hills. And interesting, in those deep restrictions at the time, the restriction was that you couldn't have garage, you couldn't have garages facing the street unless they were more than 125 feet from the street. This actually is about 126 feet from the street. So even in Hartshorn's day, this would have been a permissible front-facing garage, because it's so far from the street, the visibility is unlimited. We think that this is a good application. It's, it brings, allows the homeowner to bring the home into contemporary standards, being able to get an SUV into a parking space, getting bicycles into, into the property rather than other areas within the property or within the home. We think it's a good application. We think it meets the positive and negative criteria, it's going to seem various. And I'd be happy to show the architecturals if you'd like. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of this witness? Go.
With respect to the original intent of the ordinance, is it just purely an aesthetic? Is it just a visual appearance issue? Or is it, is there some other aspect to it? I don't know, I wasn't around when Stewart Term was around. And I know that clearly, the board, I think, had, the township committee has other rationale for why they may have included non-street-facing garages in the R3 and the R4. I think generally, it's an aesthetic, that it's more attractive, it's less attractive when garage doors face the homes in the larger districts. Because if the garage doors left open, you don't see the bicycles, the snowblower, the cars, et cetera. So I think it's primarily an aesthetic in protecting the character of the neighborhood. As it applies to the Short Hills Historic District, I think you do start to also run into the, a lot of these homes were developed under the Hartshorn regulations, which prohibited front-facing garages.
I have a question. And this is really not relevant to the garage itself. So has any thought been given to eliminating one of those two driveways?
They are, they were pretty interesting. They're actually brand new. There was a central driveway.
I know that, I know that.
And I think, because there's such a sense of symmetry in the property, the applicant really chose to eliminate the safety issue of having one driveway at the intersection, pulling two driveways a significant distance from the intersections for safety. So I think there was a desire to have that symmetry, because this house is so much about symmetry. And while the garage addition was not brought forward to be purely symmetrical, I think there was a nod to that, and I think that HPC recognizes that.
I asked the question only because it's very obvious to anyone who lives in this town that that is one of the most sensitive and prominent corners in the entire Short Hills area. And I, I note from your drawing that there, the existing driveway is going to be retained, but as a walkway instead of a driveway.
That's correct.
So it'll be narrowed. But still, there will be three entrances onto Stewart and Highland. And one, one each, and one on the corner. I was, I understand the argument about symmetry. But on the other hand, three different entrances to this property. And I'm well aware that the board has no jurisdiction over driveways. This application is just here before the board, because this is a quote "front-facing garage." But as you point out, the front of the garage is really not visible from Highland Avenue.
Correct. And I would point out that the, it's not that the board is prudent in speaking to it, but clearly, these are fully conforming, both in terms of their locations. So there's no variance really required. And I would also point out, even with the additional pavement associated with them, in the proposed condition, our lot coverage is...
Way in.
Two-thirds of what's, what's permitted. We're at 22% where 35% is permitted. And our front yard coverage is also about one-third. But 9.8% of the 30% is permitted. So we're significantly underdeveloped in the property.
I will leave, I will leave the subject now in your tender hands and in the hands of the homeowners. If this front-facing garage is approved, I would just suggest that maybe some thought should be given to the fact that three driveways into this property are a lot, given the sensitive location of the property. And I'll leave the subject now. Any other questions of this witness? Or of any, either of the two witnesses?
I don't have a question, but I'd say, I agree with your assessment.
Well, we haven't, we'll go into, I'll close the public portion of the meeting now. Any comments by board members?
My comment, I agree with your assessment on the driveways. I know that property very well. And the driveway that was historically used was kind of a grand access point to it. And, and I think that the driveways that have been added take away from that.
If we, if we were here for driveways, I would vote no. But we're not. We're here for front-facing garage. Any other comments from board members? Is there a motion in this case?
An approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Sarah, you can have it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Before we leave, folks, I'd like to show of hands. Who's rooting for Alabama tonight? Who's rooting for Clemson? Here. Who's rooting for Clemson? It's a one-to-one tie. Okay, well, I do want to point out that the game doesn't begin until eight o'clock, so...
They're playing San Jose.
Pardon me?
They're playing San Jose. Where's the game?
That's interesting. It's in California.
Yes, my son was.
Yes, in California. Huh?
So moved.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second?
Second.
Only a favor?
Aye.
Remember, the microphone is live for another five minutes.
I'm sure the suburb.
Is it safe? Do you think it's...